Before we do the Pledge of Allegiance, I'd like to thank everyone who has served in uniform, either in our military or in our police. And I'd like to ask you to join me in a moment of silence for all those who have lost their lives in the line of duty. And I know that unlike some football players and some state senators, I know that everyone that is able in this room is standing at this moment. And please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible)
Thank you, Mayor. Now, we always start this event with breakfast. First of all, I want to tell you, you know, our breakfast was provided by Bentwood Nursing and Rehab over on Charbonneer. So I want to acknowledge her first and thank them for that. And I will have Elizabeth from Bentwood up after breakfast to speak for a minute. But I want to acknowledge that. Thank you, Elizabeth. So we are going to stop for a minute and say a prayer. The mayor has invited Pastor Ron Brooks from Florissant Valley Baptist Church in here today to lead us in prayer. Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you, Peggy. Peggy asked if I could just take a moment to share a little bit about our church. Again, I'm Ron Brooks, Pastor, Florissant Valley Baptist Church. You probably know us as the church across the street from Culvers or right in front of St. Ferdinand Park, the one with the sign. So if you drive down, up and down Lindbergh, you've probably seen our church. We are a church of folks who really believe in being involved with our community as we have programs to minister to those who are needy. We also are in a partnership, we're beginning with Duchesne School, and we feel it's very important to reach out to our community. We also are a church that has our largest group of senior citizens. And as I look at the menu at Denny's and at IHOP, and the AARP tells me that I'm part of that number two. So it's good to be part of my people today. Before I, Legion Purge, I just want to tell you about two things that are happening at Florissant Valley Baptist. One is September the 25th. I know that probably almost everyone here in this room has a church family, but if you don't have a place where you're attending, we have a special welcome day coming up, that Sunday morning, 10:30 is worship, and then we have a free meal available for you after that. But one thing I'm especially excited about is that this Wednesday at our church, we host the Christian Community Choir. And we know that a lot of churches don't have choir programs now, and so we decided to be involved with, open up our choir and be involved with the community choir. So if you enjoy singing, we have a lot of senior adults that are involved in that choir. This Wednesday at 6:30, we'd love for you to be a part of it. There are Protestants, Catholics, people from all different backgrounds that are involved in that choir. We'd love for you to be a part of that, 6:30, again, this Wednesday, September 21st. Let's bow our heads now in prayer. Father, we thank you for the privilege of being here today. We thank you for all those who have prepared both the meal and this opportunity to learn more about our city, and those that can be able to help and assist and be involved with the senior adults in our community. We're so grateful for our senior citizens and all the impact that they've made on Florissant, the builders, and those who have been involved in so many ways. Lord, we ask for your blessing upon them and upon this event. Bless the food and our time together, in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Mr. Mayor, would you like to turn the volume up? Okay, are we ready to begin? Let's welcome our mayor, Mayor Thomas Snyder.
Our first guest this morning is the most popular person in town, Sergeant Eddie. And I wanted to dispel some rumors before we get started that, I've discussed it with Eddie, and he has no ambitions for running for political office. He does not want to destroy his great reputation. So let's hear it for Eddie. And Officer Mann, you want to say, why don't you tell everybody what Eddie's been doing lately?
If anybody hasn't met Eddie, he's our community service dog. We don't teach him any bite, any narcotics. It's strictly happy, play with the kids, play with adults, go into nursing homes. So I'm gonna, actually retiring, so I'm gonna have more time to work with him and get him into different events. So what we're gonna do, we did a book fair the other day with Ferguson Florissant where he played with the kids. He loves going down slides with kids. He loves going to the civic center. A couple of his friends that he plays with in the workout room are here. Where are you at? He does the... And he is the most spoiled dog in the state of Missouri. I'd say, United States, but then I see that some dogs have personal chefs, which he doesn't. But, so, we go to many events, and he loves people, so if he's demanding about your attention, it's because he's spoiled rotten. So, thank you.
I really love Eddie to death, but could someone get me another water? At this time, I'd like to invite our council president, Jackie Pagano, to say a few words and to introduce the city council. Do you want the rest of this water?
Well, thank you, thank you. But I do love Eddie. I would've given him sausage. Good morning, everyone. First, I would like to introduce the members of the council that were able to make it today. We have from Ward 1, Tim Lee. He's over there. Ward 2, Tim Jones, which is in the back. Ward 6, Gerard Hanky. Myself, Ward 7. And Tommy Siam, Ward 9. I am very fortunate to work with just a great group that wants nothing more than to make this city the safest and best city it can be. I would also like to thank all of you for the overwhelming passage of Prop's A&R. Although we will not see the revenue until 2017, we are already working closely with the Administration, Public Works Department, and Police Department on our code enforcement. We have acknowledged the problem, and we are working hard to fix it. In closing, I would like to share some words from Dr. Seuss. Unless someone like you cares a whole awful lot, nothing is going to get better. It's not. I believe this council cares an awful lot. We are here to serve you, so please do not hesitate to contact us about anything. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. And I want to say that the administration and the council, we try to put the interest of the citizens first. We don't always agree on everything, as you can see in the newspapers once in a while, but I think that our motives are pure, and that we're trying to do what's best to move this city forward. In addition to propositions B, A, and R, we also want to thank you for last November passing Proposition S for additional revenue to maintain our streets. In the last year, we really feel very grateful for the support that especially our seniors have given to future generations to help the city. Give us tools so that we can keep this city beautiful for a long, long time. And I know that's just a very generous thing for you guys to do for your children and your grandchildren. We appreciate it. So give yourselves a round of applause. Also, we'd like to, we also have, I'd like to ask the chief supple from the Florissant Valley Fire Protection District just to say a few words, and also representative from the Hazelwood School District and the Ferguson Florissens District to come on up and say a few words.
It's good to be here this morning. My name's Scott Supple. I'm the chief of the Florissant Fire District. I'll keep this brief, but if you live on this side of Halls Ferry in the city of Florissant, we are your fire department. If you live in the city of Florissant on the east side, Blackjack is your fire protection district. We have three engine houses. We have the one in Old Town. We have the one by Donegan Park, and then we have the one up by Hazelwood Junior High. All of our firehouses have an ambulance with two paramedics every day of the year, and all of our fire apparatus, our fire engines, have a paramedic on it. So we're fully ALS to serve you better. I just want to remind you that next month is Fire Prevention Month, and so I've got a list over there, and we would love for you to give me your name and phone number, and I'll send out some good-looking firemen to check your smoke detectors and batteries. So, anyway, thank you. Have a great day.
Since we happen to be in the Ferguson Florissens School District, we'll ask our guests from the Hazelwood School District to come first.
Good morning, Mayor Snyder, elected officials, guests, and the awesome seniors. You guys look amazing. I am Julia Burke, the Associate Superintendent for the Hazelwood School District, and I am truly delighted to be here, to be your speaker, and to talk to you a little bit about the wonderful things that are going on in the Hazelwood School District. I first want you to know that we have a new superintendent who joined us July 1st. Her name is Dr. Nettie Collins-Hart, and she is doing terrific things to lead our district and to move us forward. It's been a very good year so far. We have tonight our State of the District address, and so if any of you are interested in coming to that, please join us. We have three goals that we are focusing on, and they are student achievement, enhanced professional development, and increased parent and community engagement. And I just want to showcase a few things about those three areas. Under student achievement, we have nearly 18,000 students enrolled in the Hazelwood School District. We are the second-largest district in St. Louis County and ranked number seven in the state of Missouri. We are fully accredited, and I am proud to say that because a lot of districts have been struggling with that. And what that means is that we have earned our state standards according to the Missouri Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Our students that currently graduated the class of 2016 earned more than $22 million in scholarships to attend colleges and universities across the United States. We are proud of the rigorous curriculum and other academic supports that help our students be prepared and equipped to move forward in the 21st century. Under enhanced professional development, which is goal number two, we focus on generating lifelong learners for our staff. We encourage our teachers and staff to continue their academic pursuits as well as conduct on-site professional development. By doing this, we partner with local colleges and universities and other organizations that are well-equipped with the latest on science, technology, engineering, and math, and other educational tools. To address goal number three, increased parent and community involvement, we have many ways that we engage our parents. The number-one method is through our PTSAs, the Parent Teacher Organizations. We also have two programs that are volunteer programs, and we named those programs HSD Heroes and HSD Readers. And those are two programs that increase the adult presence in the school. So if any of you are interested in being a volunteer in our district, please join us. You don't have to live in the Hazelwood School District to volunteer. We also have programs for our senior residents. It's a program called the Stars Program. And this program allows any resident 65 or older, so some of you may qualify for that, to be guests at our regularly scheduled home sporting events, musical performances, and other theatrical events, free of charge. So if you're interested in getting one of those senior passes, contact 953-5000, and we'll get you a pass. You can come up to the building and pick up a pass. If you have any other questions or you want to volunteer to work with our students, please call that office, the Communications Department, or the main line. We will be happy to have you support our school and our school community. And once again, on behalf of the Board of Education and Dr. Collins-Hart, thank you for allowing us to present today and be here with you.
And now, a few words from the Ferguson Florissens School District.
Morning, Mayor, and good morning, all of our guests here this morning. I'm Kevin Hampton. I'm the Executive Director of Communications and Marketing for the school district. And we're grateful that you invited us to be a part of things this morning, enjoy this breakfast, and get to visit with some people. Dr. Davis, our superintendent, he loved coming to this last year. In fact, he patterned our State of the District event after what he saw at this event last fall because he was so impressed with it. And he regrets that he couldn't be here today. He had a dear uncle who was kind of a father figure to him who passed back in North Carolina, and so he's going a million miles an hour today trying to get things together before he heads back there. But he wanted to make sure that we had an opportunity to talk with you and just let you know a little bit about what's going on. In the, a little over a year, 15 months that he has been on the job, there have been a lot of new initiatives that have taken place in the district. And at the same time that we're doing a lot more, we're also narrowing the focus on our key things, attendance, academics, and attitude, and working to build better student behavior, and increase safety, and all of those things that are important to our community. If you hear him talk at all, you will hear at some point him mention, he'll mention relationships, and that's a huge thing. And the relationship that we have with you as the community is an incredibly important thing. No, he said this yesterday to someone, he can't do it alone. None of us can do it alone. It takes all of us working together as a community to make a difference for the children of this community. And so when we were thinking about the things we wanted to share with you today, so often it feels like I'm sure to you that we come asking you for something. But I wanted to make sure that we shared some opportunities with you, too. And apparently, we have been keeping a secret from the community, from the conversations I had over here. Who has never been to Little Creek? Raise your hand. Who never heard of Little Creek before today? Raise your hand. Okay, we need a field trip. When you, when you leave the breakfast today, drive down Waterford to Dunn Road and turn left, and it's right there across from the Florissant Valley Community College. Nature trails, there's a little bit of livestock, there's bird watching, flowers. It's a great place to get out and enjoy, and we'd love for you to come and relax and enjoy. You will think you've stepped out into the country, and you're right here still in Florissant. The other opportunity that we have for you is we have some part-time work available if you are interested in doing that. And so an opportunity for you to earn a little income as a crossing guard, working in the cafeteria. There are some options like that, or substitute teaching. And if you're tired of doing that and don't want that responsibility, but you'd still like to do something for kids, we do have some volunteer opportunities, spend time reading with kids, or in other ways. And so you can find that information on our website, or you can stop over here before you go, or just call us at the school district, 506-9000, and we'll help connect you. But it does take all of us working together to be able to make a difference, and no one who is in this room is at a place where you don't have something to give. In fact, many of you have a lifetime of experiences that our kids could benefit from, and so we'd love to have you be a part of that with us. Thank you again for letting us come today.
Thank you, Kevin. And, you know, I don't know about you guys, but last Sunday on that beautiful, beautiful day weather-wise that we had, I did not miss the NFL one bit. So I'm gonna get my football fix from the high school football teams up in our area, from the Ferguson Florissens School District teams of McClure and McClure North, and Hazelwood School District teams of Central and West and East, and also Berkeley School at Ferguson Florissens. But there's another team that's steamrolling Division 2. I don't know if you've noticed it or not, but Trinity is 4-0, and they've beaten their opponents by an average score of over 50 points a game. They beat Duchesne, they beat Ritter, they beat, what was the other team? Priory, and they beat a team from O'Fallon. And they're playing Luther North, not this week, but next week, and they're gonna be, I'm hoping they'll go undefeated. They are ranked. It's the first time I think Trinity has ever been, Rosary or Quaint Mercy has ever been ranked, so that's in our district. So we're proud of them. At this time, I'd like to ask Bob Russell, our Director of Economic Development, to give a recap of the progress that we've been making. In addition to Culvers, we've got a lot of other success stories, and we've got a lot on the burner. Some of them we can't tell you about yet, but there's a couple of them that we'll probably be able to talk about before the year's over. Bob?
Morning, everyone. It's always fun to get here and tell you about some of the new things we have coming. Some of these you've seen and are open, but some of the others that we're gonna talk about, I think you've been looking for. One of the things that have been looked at for a long time is the Closed Yak's Restaurant that has undergone extensive remodeling and will open as the Jewel Banquet Center for large and small banquets and events of all kinds. That should open in the next 30 to 45 days. One of the other things that's been kind of a thorn is the Grand View Shopping Center. There's been not much activity there for years. It's partly because of the previous ownership, which was a REIT, which is a real estate trust out of New York. However, it was purchased recently by a developer in California who owns 25 centers across the United States. The mayor and I have met with him, and he assures us of planning some rather large future developments for Grand View Shopping Center. One of the other ones that have closed that are as highly visible is the Bob Evans location. We're happy to say that that is under contract. We cannot disclose the tenant, but I'm sure every one of yous will be happy to patronize that establishment. A couple others, the, that ugly used car lot with the purple, pink, and white building, that is gonna be demolished shortly, and that is gonna be a $4 million U-Haul, three-story storage facility, a very nice development. Couple others, Meyer House and Barn has been sold to a private developer. We talked about this before. He's contacted me. He's looking to get a little bit of an upscale restaurant in the barn. As you know, Jimmy John's is open. They looked for that location for six years because of the rules and regulations of Jimmy John's Corporate. He made it into that location by one-tenth of a mile. The other one of interest is, next to Culvers, is the Closed Marty Consilla Showroom. That's in the, the initial progress, initial demolition of a, be a new Popeyes restaurant there. It's owned by the largest franchisee in the United States. The person that owns this Popeyes owns 150 other Popeyes across the US. One other, Dunkin' Donut had a location on Lindbergh. Didn't go over so well because of access. However, across the street from Mattingly's is a blue building. I think it's got some garage doors on it. That's being torn down, and that'll be a new standalone Dunkin' Donut building. I have a list of everything, some of the other things. We have five or six confidential projects that are in negotiations and due diligence. As they are released by the developers, we'll be informing you of what those are, but every one of them has a significant impact on Florissant. Thank you.
I'd like to just introduce and have them stand some of our other department heads. Our Bean Counter, our Director of Finance, Randy McDaniels here. We're just now getting started in our budget process for the 2017 budget. Looking forward to discussing those items with the city council. Our city clerk, who is in charge of city records and a lot of other things in our meeting agenda and so forth, is Karen Goodwin. Our Director of Community Development is Carol O'Meara. She helps to, she helps to run the community development block grant funds, but also helps us so that we don't have to tell people that that's not our job. So she helps to try to find volunteer resources to help those that might not be able to help themselves, but they're, in every other way, very good citizens and residents of our community. We have our manager of our internet communications, Kim Memerson is here, IT. We were very fortunate to acquire this next employee from the city of Ferguson before they had their problems. It was like a year and a half or so before they had their problems, but we're so proud to have a great, one of the best human resource directors around, Sonya Brooks White. Representing our theater department is Trish Nelke, because our theater manager is in Milwaukee at the moment, and so Trish is here from the theater. Very proud of our theater. I'm sure that, I know that a lot of you people are patrons of the theater, and we're, I think we're the only, there's only maybe two municipalities that have theaters, and we're proud to have a 600-seat theater. We also have our media manager, Carrie Lester, is here. And of course, everybody knows Peggy Hogan for our senior coordinator. So Todd thought he was getting off early by coming up and, easy by coming up and fixing the microphone, but you're not gonna get off that easy, Todd. I'm gonna ask you to come back. And Todd Schmidt is our Director of Parks and Recreation. He's gonna tell you about what's going on with Parks and Recreation. Todd's pretty much worked for the city of Florissant almost his entire working career. I think he had like a two-week stint with McDonald's, but other than that, he's been a lifeguard. A lifeguard who worked his way up to Parks Director, and that's a heck of an accomplishment to stay within our organization that long in today's working environment. I just want to mention that the Little Creek thing was mentioned earlier. That's right next to, it touches Donegan Park, which we're very That's right next to, it touches Dunnington Park, which we're very proud of. We're very proud to have taken that park back by reinventing it with a disc golf course. We had a tournament there a couple weeks ago, very well attended. The park is very much enhanced, not only by the pleasant look of the disc golf facility, but also all the traffic, the wholesome traffic has brought back other wholesome traffic, and we're very happy that Dunnington Park is a very wholesome park again. Todd?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the James J. Egan Civic Center. Thrilled to see all of you folks here this morning. Very large crowd. In fact, I overheard Peggy the other day mentioning this is the largest crowd that, for a senior town hall meeting that the mayor and Peggy Hogan has ever, ever hosted, so congratulations on that. Typically, when I have an opportunity to speak to an audience, I have a tendency to brag a lot about all of the benefits and services and amenities that are available to you through the Florissant Parks and Recreation Department, and I try to encourage and remind everyone to take advantage of that. But this morning, I'm gonna take a little, add a little twist to this, because I think it's more important for me to probably expound or explain a little bit about this yellow card that I think everybody's got inside their program this morning. You may have heard or at least know that the, we in the Parks and Recreation Department experienced a, what I call a significant hiccup in our computer system, and it, the result of that is that we lost a lot of data. Room reservations, picnic reservations, memberships, class and program information, and even photo ID card information. I'm happy to report that we are all up and running again with that, with the program. Our software's up and running. A lot of work was put in by my staff and the IT Department, and the mayor actually put together a committee to take a look at future problems or to head off future problems with our network system. But I am happy to report that we are up and running. We are taking picnic and room and facility reservations now, class registration, program registration. We can process memberships, and we can also process photo ID cards. However, there is one thing that, you can see that on this card here, that we do need a little help from each and every one of you that do have current cards. The cards that you have right now are considered inactive, so we are going to need everyone that has a current card to renew their card at their earliest convenience. I don't want everybody stampeding the two lovely ladies out there. You'll give them a heart attack if all three-hundred-and-fifty people go out there at the same time. But at your convenience, if you can just go either here at the Egan Center or the JFK Community Center, bring your current card, and they, it'll just take a matter of seconds to reissue a new card. And then, of course, once you get your new card, then you can take advantage of all of the benefits and services and amenities that are available to you in the Florissant Parks and Recreation Department. So, I guess that's where I start bragging about our amenities and things. We've got two, I'm sure you know, two outstanding state-of-the-art community centers, recreation facilities, over four-hundred acres and parkland. We've got, I don't know if there's any golfers out there, but we have a magnificent eighteen-hole golf course, the Florissant Golf Club. If you haven't been out there recently, customer service is outstanding, unparalleled to none. Mayor, you could probably attest to that. The course itself is beautiful. It's probably the best it's looked in ages. We also have a great discount fee program for senior citizens. You can see me afterwards to get details on that. So, we've got a lot of things going on, very progressive, very active in the Parks and Recreation Department. Of course, we're continually offering hundreds and hundreds of classes and programs and activities and special events throughout the entire year, not just for Florissant residents, but for people of all ages and abilities and locations. I can't stress this enough, though, and I say this every time I'm up here talking to any type of audience, please know that this, we're here to serve you. This is your Parks and Recreation Department. If you ever, ever have any ideas or suggestions on how we can better serve you or your family, please don't hesitate to come visit me or see any of my staff members here at the Egan Center or at the JFK Community Center. So, with that being said, I think that's all I've got. Please see me. As you know, all the department heads will be here to answer questions. I've got handouts, and thank you for your attention and allowing me to speak. Thank you.
Now, I don't want to discount the importance of the Parks Department. You know, we obviously put the highest priority on police protection, and we've put the second highest priority on code enforcement and so forth, and then we got street maintenance and all this other kinda stuff. But, you know, to be a healthy community, we need to have outlets so that we can be, feel fulfilled when we're not working. So, we need opportunities to recreate, to recreate ourselves, both physically and mentally. So, not all of our programs are physically orientated. Many of them are mentally and socially oriented, like the theater program and the other, a lot of programs where we have get-together. We have bridge clubs, and we have all kinds of opportunities for people to gather. We have the nature lodge. We have all of our other facilities where we have an opportunity to get together in beautiful surroundings. And I wanna compliment Todd Schmidt for being a great steward of our recreation programs and his superintendent, Bob Laramie, who's been with us a very long time, keeping our parks looking very beautiful. At this time, I'd like to ask Lou Gerald's to come up to the stage. Lou has a lot on his plate. Lou? Let's give him a round of applause. In addition to the things Public Works, you know, streets and all the infrastructure maintenance and everything, Lou also has the Health Department and the Code Enforcement Department and a lot of other things. And so, Lou has always had a lot on his plate. He's been with us almost as long as I've been with the city. I think he started in nineteen-eighty-one under the Egan administration, so he's now worked under three mayors and a whole, probably thirty-something council members, almost forty. That's kinda hard when you're a Public Works Director and you got a lot of things that you, a lot of moving parts that you're in charge of. But Lou does an outstanding job, and I really appreciate having him on our staff. Lou?
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, everyone. How we doing today? I wanna also thank Bentwood Nursing and Rehabilitation Center for breakfast. Some of you folks are starting to doze off, so I'm gonna be real brief. In fact, I'm almost halfway done. Just some of the highlights of my department this year. We've been really busy early in the year with all the rains and trying to get people to learn how to recut their grass. I wanna thank Channel Four for the news spot they gave us. If we come out and cut your grass, it's a hundred and ninety dollars. So, if anybody wants us to cut your grass, I guarantee it'll probably be only once, but we really would like everyone to cut their own grass. Remind you also that we have a really good kennel down at the Health Department. We picked up, personally, me and my wife picked up an All-American, which is really just a mutt, and he's doing really good in the agility training. We also have free totes down there, recycling. We also got a grant this year from St. Louis County to raise awareness on recycling throughout the city. We think our numbers can improve, so I'd like everybody to get that back up on the sticky side of your brain and start, you know, being more aware of recycling wherever you can. The Street Department's been really busy this year. We've probably worked on over a hundred and fifty-seven different streets. I can still keep talking. Let's see. Yeah, let's see. Okay, we've worked on about a hundred and fifty-seven streets. We're spending about one-point-eight million dollars in city revenues this year on streets. Proposition S, again, I wanna thank everyone about Proposition S. Last year, 2015, we plan to do major street improvements to Keaven Lane, about three-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars. We've got an application for a grant with MoDOT, and we hope to get about forty percent reimbursement on some of that money, so we've still, we've got a lot of, a lot of street work going on. Engineering Department, they've applied for grants, and we're working through about one-point-nine million dollars worth of grants. We've got improvements to St. Anthony Lane Bridge. We're gonna replace the bridge over Fountain Creek at St. Anthony. And we've also got Old Town Street and Stormwater improvements to Lafayette Street from sixty-seven to Washington that we're, right now, the design is about done, and we're securing right-ofways, so that's being done. And then, we got a pedestrian signal at Robinwood School on Deer Hackey. So, that, those encompass the one-point-nine million in federal grants. Hey, I knew Todd could do it. So, yeah, we've still got a lot of work going on there. Two programs in the Engineering Division is our Sidewalk Replacement and Repair Program. In fact, that's one of your homework assignments when you leave here. I'm not gonna ask for volunteers. You've all been designated volunteers by the Public Works Department, officially designated, to make sure you look at any sidewalks that need repairs and replacement. Let us, let us know. Call City Hall and let us know about those. Also, streetlights. Make sure, you know, if there's any streetlights that are out, any that are encompassed by trees that need to be trimmed back, anything damaged, let us know. We pay for that streetlight whether it's on or not, so let us know. That's your homework, two homework assignments. Also, again, earlier this year, the big thing was Proposition R, which is we raised the fee for residential renter licenses for rental property from fifteen dollars to fifty dollars. We used to be fifteen dollars for as many properties as you own. Now, it's fifty dollars for each rental unit that you own. So, that's gonna bring in quite a bit of revenue for the city and help us hire additional code folks to go after. We've got about twenty-five thousand, two-hundred different properties throughout the city. Twenty-three thousand of that is residential. Seven thousand, six-hundred is residential rental property units. But the biggest concerns we have are with the single-family residential. They seem to be causing us the most concerns. That's only about thirty-three hundred houses, but out of twenty-five thousand pieces of property, we've got about thirty-three hundred that are just really a problem, so it takes a lot of effort. Again, also like to thank the voters for Proposition A, which is two-hundred dollars registration fee for vacant property. If you're gonna have vacant property over six months, then you need to register that with the city. We go by periodically and look at it. The police will go by periodically and look at it, so it's not like we're just, you know, we're trying to keep track of all the vacant properties in the city. We're also trying to maintain all properties in the city. So, that's, that's one of the biggest efforts that we're into right now. Other than that, the only other thing is if you would all stop by my table over here and get a good neighbor guide, I'm sure there's at least one or two things that your neighbor or the guy down the street, you know, could improve on. And this, this tells you, you know, all the different things that we usually get, the common, the common things that, you know, like maintaining your yard and trees and bushes and picking up after your dog and, you know, sidewalks, junky yards, house repairs that need to be done, different things. If you're gonna have a party, you know, be considerate, different things. So, it's a good brochure to pick up. Again, I'd like to thank everyone for being here, and I'll be over here to answer any questions. Thank you.
You see how quick Lou was to get that flashlight working on his cell phone? Quick on his feet. One addition to the, that the administration's gonna recommend to the council, I'm kinda confident that we'll approve this after discussing it with the chief and Finance Director. The administration will be recommending to the council that we add an additional police officer in 2017 to do code enforcement along with the other two code enforcement officers that we currently have. In the past, in the not-too-distant past, we only had one police officer assigned to code enforcement, and it was not really full-time, but it was, you know, mostly, most of his time was spent in code enforcement. Then we added another officer to code enforcement, and as a result of your support with Propositions A and R, we are in a position to add a third code enforcement, or in a position to recommend that we add a third code enforcement officer to our efforts. We have a new initiative that the council's been working very hard on, just recently passed, is called Crime Free, and it's just an acronym for trying to make sure that our landlords screen their tenants so that we get good residents to live among us. And so, in order to help us with our increased code enforcement effort, we're gonna have another, we're recommending that the council approve another code enforcement officer. And at this time, I'd like to ask Chief Lowry to come on up, and let's give him a round As most of you know, Chief Tim Lowry is the son of former chief and mayor Robert Lowry and the brother of two police officers, ones with a Quantico, Robert Junior, and his other brother's in Kentucky, Dave, is with the FBI. And so, we're very proud of the entire Lowry family and very fortunate to have Chief Timothy Lowry as our Chief of Police. I'm gonna ask him to introduce his major and also his other officers that are here today, and then tell you what we're doing to keep you safe. Chief?
Good morning. I guess I'm the guy that gets to bring this all home. I'm sure you guys are ready to get out of here, but I'll try to be brief. One of the things the mayor did earlier today, he's kinda stole a little bit of my thunder. Eddie's my dog. I know you're the boss, but Eddie is my dog. I never, I get complaints about officers all the time, whether or not they write somebody a ticket, they're not, they're not happy, they're kinda gruff, but I gotta tell you something, Eddie, I'd never get a complaint about him. He's my, he's my favorite officer, I promise you that. But all kidding aside, I really do wanna thank the mayor for inviting me here to the town hall meeting. Appreciate you guys all being here today. In addition, you know, the Police Department, I mean, there's a lot of moving parts, but honestly, the success of the Police Department really is the employees. But in addition to that, I really, the mayor and the City Council really do support the Police Department, and really, without the City Council and the mayor's support, it'd be very difficult to run this Police Department. I think we have the most professional Police Department in this area, maybe the United States. I travel all over, and I can tell you that I'm very proud of my Police Department, and these guys do a great job. And I wanna introduce some of those guys who are with me today. My Assistant Police Chief, Tim Fagan, he's a major with Police Department. So, if you got any complaints about anybody, see him. I don't deal with complaints. And then Sergeant Andy Hartman, just, Andy was born and raised here in the City of Florissant, just recently got promoted to sergeant. He's in charge of the Traffic Division. In all honesty, I know one of your guys, the complaints I get all the time are about speeding, stop sign violations. Sincerely, talk to Andy after the meeting if you have one of those complaints, and we'll get that dealt with, sincerely. And then Officer Craig DeHart, he's my Public Information Officer. And code enforcement is another big topic, obviously, with, when we go to a lot of these meetings, so I add Officer Sean Coomer. And it's something else that Officer Coomer's been doing along with Public Works and members of the council, is that we're developing a Crime Free Program, which is an international program. Lou Gerald's is very involved in that. The council's very involved in that. And really, what the idea is, is to kinda take on the rental property issue, but what we, we're trying to do is build a partnership with the property owners, the renters, so we can all work together to make this community and the rental properties something that we all can live with and we can deal with, because obviously, we do have a lot of rental properties in this town, and so we really wanna, we wanna come up with a program to deal with that. So, Sean is in charge of that program as far as the Police Department's concerned. Like I said, Lou works, has worked on that also. Officer Steve Johnson's with me today. So, Steve is my Business Liaison Officer. It's a program that we started, I guess, about nine months ago. Really, what the idea is, to build a relationship. Our business community is so important in this town, and so it's really to build a relationship between, a good, positive relationship between our business community and the Police Department. And I'll tell you this, if you guys have any concerns sincerely about the shopping centers, safety, parking issues or whatever, Steve's here, and he'll, he'll take care of those, and he'll deal with those issues also, because that's also part of his job, not just to talk with the business people, but also to make sure that our shopping centers are safe for everybody to shop and enjoy. And if you got any issues, please talk to Steve. He'll be happy to answer that. And then, of course, the other one I was gonna introduce, but I don't have to now 'cause the mayor took that, is Officer Mann and Eddie. But seriously, Eddie is a, Eddie really has been a great program for the department. He goes out and he has this positive interaction with groups of people, whether they're children, seniors, adults. Everybody loves to have that. It's really been a great program for the Police Department. And then, a few other things I wanna talk about real quick. I don't wanna go too long, but I always talk about the Neighborhood Watch Program. Neighborhood Watch is so important to the city. It's so important to you guys. I mean, we have about twelve-hundred members, I think, in the program now. It'd really be nice if we could have a Neighborhood Watch group in every neighborhood. It's so important. It's you guys really getting together, watching out for each other, taking care of your neighbors. It's a program about neighbors helping neighbors, and it's really is very important to all our neighborhoods, and we certainly will support all of these groups. Officer DeHart, myself, will come out, will speak to you, whatever we can do, but we really encourage everybody to join a Neighborhood Watch group. If there's not one in your neighborhood, please start one. But another program I wanna talk about with Neighborhood Watch, though, is that, I think I brought this up last year, is we now have a ward captain program, and this is, each ward of the city has a representative in this program. is, each ward of the city has a representative in this program, and these guys meet once a month. They're given crime stats, they go over crime patterns, they inform the ward captains exactly what's happening in the area. And I'm going to tell you, these guys do great work, and I do want to introduce those people also. The two coordinators and the guys that really came up with this idea, and it's been just a great idea, is Sonny Pondrum and Norm Carrington, if you guys could stand up. Appreciate what you guys do. And four of the ward representatives are with us today. From Ward 1 is Lance Helwig. Thanks, Lance. Carol Webb, I know she's over here from Ward 2. Pat Blaisdell from Ward 8. Pat, nope. And then we've got Andrew Mims from Ward 9. Thank you for, thank you for what you guys do, we really appreciate it. They spend a lot of time, I'll tell you, they're, they're very intense, two, three-hour meetings, and I've attended them myself, and they do great work. I appreciate what they do. Another thing I want to talk about is, is that, the other thing that the Police Department does is home security surveys. You can schedule an appointment with Officer DeHart. An officer will come to your home, go through your house, look for security, the ways that you guys can improve the security of your home, both inside and outside. And Officer DeHart's got the information on that, so that's something I would encourage. Another thing I'd like to encourage is on Tuesday, October the 4th, we're going to celebrate our National Night Out. Normally, we've done that in August, but we've kind of seen the numbers are kind of down because August is so hot. So a lot of, a lot of the departments in this area and in other parts of the country have moved it to October. So we're going to celebrate it this year on October the 4th, it's on a Tuesday. I encourage you guys to have block parties. We show up, the Police Department will show up, the Chief Sepple and the Fire Department will show up, and just to, just to interact with you and your neighbors, the mayor, some members of the city council, they'll come to the block parties. And if you want a block party permit or something you're interested in, you just contact the mayor's office and he'll get those out to you. But we'd really love to, we'd love to attend those. Just so you know, we were only there for maybe a brief period of time because we have so many to attend, but, you know, we really encourage that you guys have those block parties. Great way to get to know your neighbors. And then another thing I'll mention, then I'll move on, is we have an AARP Driving Course. It's going to be Tuesday, November the 8th, at the Florissant Police Department. That's the last one for the year. I don't know how many of you guys have attended these, but, you know, the class is really designed, it just is a fresh, roadway safety issues. And then the other thing is, is that you get a certificate for attending the program, but more importantly, depending on your insurance company, you could get a discount if you need to check with your insurance carrier for just attending this class. So it's something that I would definitely encourage. And then two little crime issues that always happen this time of year, well, this one's kind of new, I'm sorry. But you guys probably seen on the news the other night, when we had one of our residents was visiting Sacred Heart Cemetery and his vehicle got stolen. You know, it's an absolute shame that that happened. Obviously, we're working very hard on trying to recover his vehicle. But you guys, you know, when you, when you visit the gravesites, please, don't leave your keys in the vehicle, don't leave your cars running. And I hate to give that warning, but I think it's something that you guys need to hear because it really is a horrible thing that happened, that man, he's visiting his son's grave and his wife's grave. And so that's the second one we've had. Hayesworth's had one over in St. Ferdinand Cemetery. But like I said, we're working, we're working on it, we'll hopefully get it resolved soon, but just keep that as a safety reminder. And that's all I've got today. Thank you very much.
We're going to, one thing that I was going to mention is, in addition to being at the cemetery, please don't leave the keys in your car anywhere, you know, and I encourage you to lock your car no matter where you're at. I do it as a matter of routine, I've done it my whole life, and, you know, try to refrain from putting, you know, leaving stuff on your seat that's going to be an obvious temptation to somebody that might want to steal. I also wanted to mention that we have, we do have a lot of good things going, that things are going very well. We have a great community. We have a very labor-friendly, faith-based, patriotic community, but we're not without challenges. We're not without budget challenges either. One phenomenon that's challenging us more and more is that, as you know, people do not have landlines to their phones as nearly as much as they used to, and so people are switching over to cellphones, and it's much more difficult for us to collect the utility tax from the cellphone companies than it was from the landline companies. And so our revenue has suffered as a result of that. Also, I know, I, as with, in a, with a degree in engineering, I had some scientific training, some scientific outlook on things, and I believe that the global warming phenomena is real. And it's also real in the amount of money we're collecting on utilities in the wintertime because one, a good thing for you is that you're not spending as much on, with the clean gas or, but we're not getting the utility revenue from it either. So our utility revenue is significantly challenged. We've had a lot of fun here in the city of Florissant. As you know, we, we had the Summer Concert Series wrap up a few weeks ago at St. Ferdinand Park. We had very, very good weather. I wasn't at as many of them as I usually did in the past to introduce the entertainment because unfortunately for me, on July 4th, I also missed July 4th because I, I broke my collarbone. So to tell you the truth, there's a lot of evenings that I just didn't feel like going out. So stay off the ladders. We had a lot of Wednesday Night Out events. We're going to have one more. If you haven't been to Wednesday Night Out, there are really a lot of fun. The next one's going to be the last Wednesday in September at Handel's. We're going to block off St. Dennis Street between Handel's and Sacred Heart and have a jazz band there, and it's just a great evening to get together. Florissant residents never seem to get tired of getting together, and we, we actually have an extra, from now on, we're going to have five Wednesday Night Outs, May, June, July, August, and September. So next year, look forward to those events. We've got Fall Festival on October 9th. It's the biggest block party in the state, and it's really a heck of a good time. I'm sure most of you have been to the Fall Festival. If you haven't, you're really missing out. It's from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM. We block off St. Francis Street from Florissant Road all the way down to the Shrine, and it's probably, along with the Valley of Flowers, it's our two outstanding events that are renowned throughout the whole area. Then on October 14th, we got another Food Truck Night. Those are very, very popular down at the Knights. The city of Florissant co-sponsors those with the Knights of Columbus to benefit Team Food Pantry, and that's a, one of my favorite charities. Since I started donating my 50/50 winnings at different events to Team, I've been winning about once a month. So I've been donating to Team. And Councilman Jones has been advocating Team at every council meeting, so, you know, there's no reason for anybody to go hungry in our society, folks, so please support Team. And also another, we're going to have an event on October 22nd, the 30 Annual Race to the Shrine, 5K Run throughout the city. Will start and end at the St. Ferdinand Shrine Grounds. And so those of you that can still walk or run five miles, I'm going to be leading it with, but I'll be on a bicycle. But believe it or not, there was one runner pushing a baby carriage that I couldn't keep up with. The guy must be, you know, like a marathon runner or something. So we've got a lot of great things going on in our town. We have, we had a 9/11 ceremony, one of the few communities that had a 9/11 ceremony. We're going to have a Veterans Day Parade on November 13th, and we're going to change the route this year. It's going to begin at Bangor Park and then go up St. Florissant Road and then make a left on St. Francis and end at the VFW where we'll have the naming of the Veteran of the Year. So anyway, lots going on, and then we're going to Christmas and then take a little break of activities and then back at it next fall with the, next to spring with the Valley of Flowers and just start all over again. But anyway, thanks for coming this morning. We'll stick around to answer all the questions that you might have on any subject that you're concerned about. I want to appreciate all the department heads, all the, all the other vendors that came, and the police and the Fire Department, and we'll be here to answer all your questions. Thanks for coming again.